The council work session order, please. Madam Clerk, if you'd read the role.
Ms. Cole?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Mr. Schmidt?
Here.
Mr. Lynn?
Here.
Mr. Morrissey?
Here.
Mr. Welfer?
Here.
Mr. Hart?
Here. Motion approved. The agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Ladies and gentlemen, we're here today to kind of start the initial discussion, the first discussion, on the revised animal control ordinance changes regarding dangerous dogs, dangerous animals in general. I know there's been some...I was going to say impatience, and that's the wrong word, absolutely. It's taken us a while to get to this point, but I will explain to all of you that we did not take this situation lightly last summer when we were having issues. We don't take it lightly now, and we have spent a lot of hours going through our ordinance as we haven't had it before, suggestions from all of you that came in. Every one of them were looked at, whether they were emailed or phone called in. Every one of them were looked at. We looked at ordinances from other cities, from around the country. We included our city attorney, Chris Winland, Brad Neeland, who is a veterinarian, Donna Penny, who is...works with dogs often, Sandy and Maria, who work with the dogs on a daily basis. There was a lot of effort put into this ordinance as it's presented to you today, and what we're looking for is feedback from you. I don't think it's...we're going to get to a perfect state where everybody agrees that it's just perfect on everybody's account, but we are going to go through it today and see what we come up with. We were very careful, and you'll see this in the ordinance, to not have a breed-specific ordinance. It's about holding owners accountable for the actions of their animals. So I'm going to turn it over to Sandy Greco, who is in charge of our animal control department. And Sandy, why don't you start it off, please?
Okay. First of all, thanks for this, and thanks for your patience, because it has taken us a while. I would really like to thank Chris Winland. He's worked very, very hard with us, and I know it's been confusing and frustrating at times. What you have right now is a draft of the city's revised animal and dangerous animal ordinance that has been completed right now. Research and references from other cities and organizations were conducted by animal control officers, myself, a council member, veterinarian, insurance personnel, attorneys, rescue volunteers, and also a nurse. We are a no-kill shelter. Our numbers are remarkable. From July 1st through mid-December, we have saved eighty-nine dogs and one hundred and forty-six cats. We have euthanized only eight dogs and eleven cats due to injuries or aggressiveness. Through the help of Agape and Heart Rescue and Cedar Valley Pit Bull Rescue, who have been outstanding in placing and getting other rescues to step up and to help our animals, has been remarkable. Through hard work and the time our volunteers have put forth to help make animal control a success, is something we are very proud of. Our goal is to educate and help make pet owners responsible in the control and caring of their animals. City Attorney Chris Winland included provisions of Chapter One, Articles A and B. Some sections were renumbered, while others had changes, and some articles were moved from A to B or B to A. I'm going to basically point out some of the most important ones that we really, really worked hard on. Dangerous animal regulations, which is 5-1B-1A through D, were separated as well as we could from the dangerous dog ordinance. There's dangerous animals, and there's dangerous dogs, and we separated those.
Sandy, hang on just a second. I'm sorry. I didn't do what I said I was going to do. If anybody doesn't have a copy of the new ordinance, we do have extra copies. If anybody would like to have one that doesn't have one, Maria, I think somebody's got them right there, so. Okay, thank you. I'm sorry, Sandy.
What page are you on?
Right now, we're not on a page, okay? Okay. Some fees were adjusted, and citations, municipal infractions were increased. Neutered and spayed cats and dogs license fee will remain the same at $5 a year, which they double after March 31st to 10, but we would like to increase the unaltered cats and dogs from $10 a year to $25 a year, and then they will also double from $20 to $50 a year. We did address chronic violators. We made...changes were made in the definition of regulatory dogs, so we have potentially dangerous, we have dangerous, and we have vicious dogs now. That's 5-1B-1. Okay, potentially dangerous dogs are basically on a watch list, which means they really haven't attacked or anything yet, but due to maybe calls we've gotten or they've been loose, there's a probability that they might. So they're potentially. Dangerous dogs and vicious dogs were also defined more aggressive. Irregulatory dogs, which the potentially dangerous dogs, even though they're on this watch list, they in turn have requirements of obedience training and also the possibility of being removed from this list after three years. Dangerous and vicious dogs, these are subsections 5-1B, 5C, and G, permit animal control to take swift and decisive action to euthanize animals. Dangerous and vicious dogs are generally treated alike, except that vicious dogs that attack can be destroyed without an appeal. Right now, we are in this revised ordinance, we're allowing pet owners that have been deemed dangerous, their dogs have been deemed dangerous or vicious, to appeal to the city council. If they win their appeal and they follow all the guidelines of a potentially dangerous dog, they can keep their dog. This is up to your discretion. This is just something we're putting forward, mainly because we don't want to euthanize every dangerous dog that comes through. Again, our goal is to make Waterloo safer and hold pet owners accountable. It is not to destroy all dangerous and vicious dogs. However, they cannot be removed from the Waterloo city limits. We are not sending our dangerous or vicious dogs to some other county, town, city. That's not allowed. If people want to remove them, they're going to have to be euthanized. We're not going to allow them to go. A potentially dangerous dog can be moved to another city or county. However, they have to fill out forms, and that destination that they're going to will be notified. We in turn will receive no vicious or dangerous dogs from another city, county, or township. We will not allow that to happen. If it does, if that dog does come into our city, it will be destroyed. Under this ordinance, and Chris Winland really helped me out on this one, the dogs deemed as dangerous or vicious can be destroyed under following circumstances. If the dog bites and is not redeemed after a rabies testing or quarantine, it can be euthanized. If it is found at large and not redeemed, euthanized. If it wasn't spayed or neutered per agreement, it can be taken and euthanized. If it was previously declared to be dangerous or vicious and is found at large and can't be captured or contained, it can be euthanized on the spot. If it is determined to be a regulated dog and is not removed or redeemed, it can be euthanized. If it is a registered dog that is not removed from the city or destroyed per agreement, we can take it and euthanize it. If it is a dangerous or vicious dog that was brought in from another jurisdiction that had found it to be dangerous or vicious in that area, we can take it and euthanize it. If it is to be registered and the owner does not get it done, we can take the dog and euthanize it. If it attacks and was previously determined to be dangerous or vicious, we'll take it and euthanize it. If it is in possession of an irresponsible dog owner, we have the right to take it and euthanize it. Animal control will have some discretion in these where the dog could be placed with a rescue possibly, but it would be up to the animal control, or a veterinarian, or a trainer to determine that. Other matters we addressed are puppies and breeding. We would like to stop the backyard breeding. So what we would like to do is if somebody wants to have a litter of puppies, they have to be either AKC-registered or registered through some organization. They just can't have puppies. We also will have a permanent identification. We will start microchipping ourselves. We do have those in hand now, so we can start microchipping. There will be a cost, however, for that. If a dog is picked up and not redeemed, or it is redeemed, we give the owner thirty days to either spay or neuter the animal. Guard dog registrations will be the same as a potentially dangerous dog, so we have a record of where this dog is. They have to pay the registration fee and everything, so we know exactly where this dog is, so if it would get loose. We are going after irresponsible dog owners. We also have a landlord liability now, and we also have some rules on tethering, where an owner cannot put their dog on a log chain, cannot leave their dog out longer than eight hours, must have a doghouse. This will also help us when, especially in inclement weather, like when it's freezing out, we can come and take a dog now and cite the owner. Okay, again, this is just a draft. Those of us who have worked on these changes welcome comments and are open for discussion. We, the city as a whole, has received comments and questions. We did receive some from...yeah, I know, you today, which I did go through all those, but I just didn't have time to incorporate it into this, and we will take everything into consideration and discuss it. So we're open. I guess our question is, did we accomplish what you wanted us to? Are we on the right track? And if there's anything further you would like to see us do, you know, we're open.
Okay. Let's do this. Let's open it up to questions right now from Sandy, from council for Sandy, and then we'll start taking comments from the audience. Carolyn?
Hi, Sandy, and thank you, and you, and everybody. I know it took a long time, and I was one of the most impatient, but I also probably had the most full inbox on this situation. If we go back to last summer, to that horrifying incident where the woman was attacked on Real Street by the three extraordinarily vicious dogs, how would that situation play out under this ordinance? Would those dogs be seized and put down immediately?
According to this right now, the owner, like we did last summer, gave him the option to come forward and follow all of our guidelines for a potentially dangerous or dangerous dog that we had in our old ordinance. He did not, so of course, the animals came to us and they were euthanized. It would be basically up to, and maybe Chris can help me on this, the discretion of the animal control officer handling the case to determine if this dog should be put down immediately or not. Well, it'd be after testing or after the quarantine period.
Counsel, do you have any...
And this can be changed. I mean, this is just a draft, so...
Mr. Hart? Just to add to that question, the animal control officer or a police officer has the authority, though, to go on a person's premises and get the dog, or is that only if the dog is living in conditions that are not conducive to what we have established?
No, according to this ordinance here, the new one, they would have the right to go on the property and seize the dog, or check and see if it's up to date on rabies and all that. They have the right to go in and do that.
Mr. Jones?
I've got a number of questions. Is this the right time to go through some of those?
Sure.
Okay. Great. Thank you for the major effort on this. It took me quite a while to get through it. It is comprehensive and somewhat complicated. In the areas where it lists out, it lists out fees throughout the document, would we be looking at a separate schedule of fees, so we don't have to continuously update this particular ordinance? Would be one question, because they're written throughout.
The municipal infractions, in pretty much now, we follow what is like code enforcement and it's pretty set fee for your citations. As for...we have increased our pickup fee from fifteen to twenty-five dollars, and then ten dollars on top of that if it happens within the same year, each pickup. That, we look at staying pretty level for a while. And the licenses would stay as-is. If you approve this, if not, we'll go back to ten dollars and twenty.
Okay. For noisy or annoying animals, I think it's the same as it is today. Residents of at least three neighboring households must sign a citation or petition. Is that correct?
Yes.
And doesn't that stop a lot of people from coming forward?
You know, it does sometimes, but actually, that request came down from the court system.
Okay. Great. And then on page five, where it talks about the annual licensing fees of, what is it, five dollars or ten dollars for each dog or cat, if it's spayed or neutered, and twenty-five for each dog or cat that is not. And then the last line of that paragraph, it says, "After March 31st of each year, annual licensing fees shall double."
Right, and it's been that way.
After each year? Because at twenty-five dollars...
Well, no, after March 31st for the annual license.
But it says after each year, so after, at twenty-five dollars, after twelve years, it'll be fifty-one thousand two hundred dollars.
No, no. Each year, that's a little confusing.
Well, it is.
Each year, the license is the same. It just doubles after March 31st.
So instead of five dollars, it costs ten dollars if you wait until after March 31st.
Okay.
I like your fifty-one thousand dollars.
I know, right?
That's thinking about revenue.
And then moving on to page six, about puppies. I was really unclear about item E, where it talks about a litter at any time exceeding two puppies. How does that work? How do you...how does a dog only have two puppies?
Little dogs very often only have two puppies, or sometimes one.
But there's others that have more, so what do you...
Sometimes six.
What do you do with the other puppies?
Okay, I might need some help with Chris on this one. What we're trying to do is stop breeding completely.
Yeah.
So if a female dog has more than two puppies, we want to go in and take them, because is that...maybe you can help me on this one.
I would hope it would be a female dog.
Yeah. You have to pick a number that represents, you know, somebody's got a dog with a puppy or two they got somewhere else versus puppies produced by the female in the household. So, you know, two is a pretty small number. It's in most situations that I'm aware of, and we can change this, but most dogs have more than two puppies if they're going to have a litter. So by setting the number at a low level, we're essentially providing a definite number, but it's for the concept that you're having puppies in the household, and that's prohibited by the ordinance.
I was also somewhat confused about the difference between the dangerous dogs and the vicious dogs. And to Carolyn's question about last summer, you know, I would think that would have been labeled as a vicious dog and put down. I don't understand why we would be putting vicious dogs back in the neighborhoods to potentially do the same thing.
And I believe, according to this, that the animal control officer could deem it vicious, and they have the right to say...
Yeah, that's right. What we're trying to accomplish with this ordinance is to give quite a bit of enforcement discretion, because there's a whole sliding scale of situations in which dogs react in certain ways. We don't want to take a wooden, rigid approach, and I don't want to spin out hypotheticals here, but it's probably easy for us to imagine situations where a dog did something bad, bit somebody, but maybe there was some reason in view of all the circumstances why we would think a dog's not likely to do that again. So we don't necessarily want to destroy them. Going back to last summer's incident, it's been a while since I looked at the facts of that, but it's possible in that circumstance that the dogs could have been labeled as vicious dogs, and if deemed appropriate in the circumstances, and there's a lot of factors that go into an evaluation of the circumstances, but if appropriate, under the ordinance as we've drafted it here, excuse me, the dog or dogs could have been put down. But they could also have been determined to be dangerous or vicious, but not likely to be repeat offenders. So...
Okay. And on that, page nine of vicious dogs, I guess 5, 1, B, 2, keeping of dangerous animals prohibited, the exceptions. I was really curious about B, 5, for purposes of bona fide religious practice or ritual? What are the circumstances around that?
People handle snakes. Some religions handle snakes as part of their...
This is the dangerous animal part, not the dangerous dog part.
Okay, very good. Okay. On page 12, the portion about guard dogs, so I thought this was kind of a, maybe an exception where people can just say that they're vicious or dangerous dogs or guard dogs and bypass all the rules. So kind of reading this a little further, is there a limitation to, if you have a house, of how many guard dogs you can actually have? Is it one? It probably should be one, if they're considered a guard dog. And these are animals that really can't be put on a leash and walked around the neighborhood, right? If they're a guard dog, they stay in that fenced yard. They never come out, unless they're going to the vet or some of these other exceptions, right? You can't walk a guard dog in the neighborhood, or can you?
No. You shouldn't.
Right, you can't, or shouldn't tie them up. I mean, it has to be a fenced yard, and it's a very...
Junkyard.
Well, these can be residences too, right? We can't tell people they can't have guard dogs, but it's a very specific rule around guard dogs. It's not your domestic pet that you're just calling a guard dog, right?
That's why we kind of put it in with a potentially dangerous, where they have to follow all the registration and...
Okay. I just wanted to be very clear about this, because it seemed like a loophole in that you just put up a sign that says, you know, "Guard Dog," and a lot of this other stuff didn't apply. But there's, I think, very specific things around having a guard dog.
Yeah. Chris, do you have a response to that?
Well, the first response is that this is fundamentally not a new provision. It's been on the books for a long time. What we did differently with this is that we made them subject to a lot of the registration requirements for dangerous dogs. Not everything. I don't think they had to be spayed or neutered right out of the gate to be a guard dog necessarily, but by and large, I think they have to comply with the other requirements of a dangerous dog, and because they're registered, they're on the same list as the other ones, and if they get out, they're subject to the same penalties or enforcement actions as a regular dog would be. We did not try and tinker with the definition of guard dog to...we just didn't try and change that. I wasn't aware that that was a concept that was of any concern to anyone, but we can work with that if you feel we need to.
Okay. And just that whole registration process, I mean, it is quite extensive, and you know, it's really unfortunate that it's easier to get a permit to carry a concealed weapon than it is to register a dangerous dog. And it's just, it seems the way things are going these days.
We have control over registering dogs. We don't have control over...
I get that. I'm just a comment on the state of affairs. On page 13, item C, it talks about insurance, and that you have to show proof of insurance. I think we may need to add something about keeping that insurance enforced during the entire registration period. I mean, you can't just have it and not, you know, if you're paying month-to-month, you can't have it for one month. You have to have it for the whole registration period. And on page 14, item J, about spay and neuter, it does not apply to the guard dogs, apparently. So I don't know if that's going to be...
We can change that, you know? I mean, it doesn't...we can add that in, the guard dog.
Oh, it's just something I noticed going through here.
David, some of those are good points. Maybe all of them are good points, and I think if we could maybe get you to submit some kind of, you know, an itemized list of what you just said to Sandy and Chris to review some of those things, I think that would be totally appropriate, so that we don't forget what you just said.
Sure.
And that would be good. We're cutting into the public time, but counsel, further questions or comments?
Mr. Mayor.
Pat did first. Tom, I'm sorry. Pat.
Yeah, Ms. Greco, thank you very much, and along with what Councilman Jones is saying with guard dogs, the language there, it says the wording "guard dog" or words of similar import. Does that mean that anybody that has a "beware of dog" sign on their house, that name then labels them as a guard dog within that property, and would they have to report that to the police?
Chris, do you remember how we got to the definition of guard dog requirements?
Well, as I said, guard dog is a concept that was in the ordinance long before the tinkering we've been doing here, and we didn't change the definition of it. It was really on the radar screen, so we weren't thinking about whether someone's going to call their pican... going to call their Pekinese a guard dog or some other kind of a dog a guard dog. I suppose they could, but then there's the requirement they always keep it in a fenced enclosure or structure at all times and can't trot around the neighborhood with it. So there are some limitations inherent in the idea, but we didn't try and define the, the scope or the tenacity of the dog or what's classically thought of as a guard dog because there's variance about that as well.
If this language was already here, was there, was the language there that said that a person in possession of that animal would have to report it then?
No, that is new.
That's new.
The, the registration requirement is new. I think, I think language that they, let's see. I believe the requirement that they inform animal control and the police department was there previously. I'd have to check back, but I think that was there before.
I have that with me. Here's what it reads. It says the prohibition contained in this article shall not apply to keeping of guard dogs, however, guard dogs must be kept within a structure or fenced enclosure at all times and any guard dog found at large may be processed as dangerous dog pursuant to the provisions of this article. Any premises guarded by a guard dog shall be prominently posted with a sign containing the word guard dog or words similar import, and the owner of such premises shall inform the animal control department and the police department in writing that a guard dog is on duty at the premises. It shall be the owner's responsibility to notify the animal control department immediately when a guard dog has escaped and is running at large.
So pretty much the same.
And that's from 1988.
So, and I think in effect, and I mean, because you call it a guard dog and post it, as long as you keep it within the confined area, it doesn't relieve you of requiring all of those covenants of having a dangerous animal.
Right, the, the primary change here is that you now have to register it.
Right.
It's not just a matter of giving Sandy a call and saying, hey, I've got a guard dog. You've got to pay these registration fees, do all this other stuff, microchip your dog, have insurance, et cetera.
I, I just, my, my, I'm, I'm still concerned that there's some ambiguity there when it comes down to naming your animal whatever, and you have beware of dog on your, on your premises, that it could be construed by neighbors to mean that that's a guard dog, whereas the owner may not see that.
But it doesn't relieve the owner of having to meet all of those requirements.
Right.
But I think that's, that's the, the crux of it, is the owner still has to meet all the requirements of a dog.
And then I had one other question. On page eight, under dangerous dog, on four, the last part of that, or by a person in the process of treating or rendering aid to a previously injured animal, can you explain number four there under dangerous dog? B four?
Chris?
This is language borrowed from other examples. Just reaching back to my own history with animals is that when they're injured, they tend not to behave the best, no matter what kind of training or prior his, history they've had. So when you're working on an injured animal, you may well get snapped at, bit, or something of that nature. So it's just recognizing the reality that injured animals can be inherently dangerous because of their temporary condition.
Okay.
And we've had that happen-
Thank you.
-when we've picked up injured animals. They'll have a tendency to bite, you know?
Thanks, Pam. Tom, you have questions?
Sandy, since we're going after irresponsible owners, why are we involving landlords? What was, what was the thought behind that?
Okay, at this time, when a citation is issued or a warning is issued to a pet owner who is in a rental property, the landlord is notified. Yes, the landlord's notified. So we're bringing in landlords so at least they can be responsible for their tenants. And if there's a major problem, sometimes it's up to them to, I can't really say threaten their tenant, but, you know, tell them either you get rid of the dog or you're, you're gone. So this way at least the tenant know, is, is also notified that the landlord knows what's going on. It's just a little more control if there's a problem with dangerous dogs, which we have in certain areas of town.
Mr. Schmidt?
Sandy, of, of the six, of the 16-page document we have here, I mean, how much of this has been changed or rewritten?
I can email you, I mean, I have everything highlighted that has been changed or tweaked or something added or taken out. Quickly?
I could, I could quickly march you through and point out what's-
I mean, I just-
-new or fairly new and what's, what's been relocated.
Okay, because it seems like some of the stuff we're talking about, it's like, well, that's from 1968 or, or whatever, and I'm not sure why we're talking about that, so.
Yeah, and it appears here because it was more suitable to relocate it somewhere else. I mean, the manner of legislation, things are just stacked on top of other things and sometimes, over the years, it doesn't end up being the, the best presentation, so. All right, so five dash one dash eight, that was moved from current five dash one A dash Page two, five dash one dash nine was moved from current five dash one A dash seven. Now, I understand when I'm talking about these moving, if I don't say more about it, I may have done some small tweaking with a bit of the wording, but nothing of substance to point out. Five dash one dash 10 was moved from current five dash one A dash six, paragraph C. Five dash one dash 11 is new. Five dash one dash 12 is new. Five dash one dash 13 is combined from former five dash one A dash 12. And five dash one A dash 11, paragraph A. Page four, the definitions shown there are new. Same on five dash one A dash one, new definitions. Page five, we changed basically the license fee, but the rest of it is substantially the same. Five dash one A dash six, there were some wording changes here and there, but paragraph two under paragraph B on page five is new. So that's paragraph B two is new. Paragraph D on feeding feral cats is new. Paragraph E on page six, dealing with puppies is new. Five dash one A dash seven was moved from current five dash one A dash eight. The next section was moved from current five dash one A dash 10. The following section from five dash one A dash 11. However, there are some new paragraphs under that section. Paragraphs B, C, and D are all new. Page seven, the definitions there are either tweaked or new. Dangerous dog is a new definition. Potentially dangerous dog is a new definition. Regulated dog is new, that's just an umbrella term for potentially dangerous, dangerous and vicious, and vicious dog is new. The following sections had changes made to them. Page 10, section five dash one B dash four was moved from five dash one B dash six. Page 11, five dash one B dash five has changes made to it, but it was formerly five dash one B dash four. Page 12, the guard dog was formerly five dash one B dash five. Five dash one B dash seven is in the same place, but has had changes made to it. Page 14, paragraph K, unobedience training is new. Paragraph M, automatic enhancement of regulated status is new. Section one B dash eight is new. Actually, all of page 15 is new. And the enforcement paragraph, or section on page 16 is a combination of new and reformatted, recombined kind of sections.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chris.
Mr. Mayor, if I could ask just a couple of quick questions?
Sure.
So Sandy, going back to page one, the five dash one and the sanitary conditions, item B, what are the, I mean, what are the repercussions for violations if they don't adhere to that? I didn't see that identified there. I mean, is the fine set someplace else or what?
On sanitary conditions?
Yeah.
Okay.
If you don't.
Usually we issue a warning and give them so many hours, depending on the time of year, because right now it's pretty hard. And then if it isn't done in due time, then a citation is issued and it'll be a regular citation like, it'll be $200 now. Yeah, it'll be a $200 fine.
Okay. So on page two, animal biting persons, that item A there, duty to report, what, what are the repercussions for that?
If they're not reported.
Yeah.
For a bite? Well, actually, if a dog bites, the owner is supposed to notify us or the person bitten. We are notified by all the clinics, hospitals, everything, you know, when there's a bite, that we get copies of that faxed to us right away.
Chris, please.
I was just going to say that where the ordinance doesn't prescribe a particular penalty, the default enforcement repercussion is that it's municipal infraction, which the first offense is $750, subsequent offenses are $1,000. Could also be a simple misdemeanor, but typically it's going to be handled as municipal infraction.
Okay. Thanks. For the noisy ordinance, are there hours stipulated or is that 24 hours a day?
Two hours.
Okay. And on enforcement on page three, again, repercussions, does that go back to what Chris was saying about it just goes to?
Municipal infraction.
I'm sorry, what did you say?
On, on page three, enforcement, what are the repercussions for that again?
That would be the same.
Same thing as what?
Yeah, generally speaking, it's going to be municipal infraction.
And then with the, the puppy issue, again, going back to page six. So number one, are we saying that if somebody has a dog that has puppies and it has six puppies, and we find out they have six puppies, we're going to go and take four of those six puppies?
We, we have-
Leave them two?
We, we would. And there's discretion in there too, you know? What we're trying to do is stop breeding.
Well, and I'm not arguing with you, I'm just, I'm just asking this. And it also mentions in there about, you know, unless the animals are AKC animals.
And there's other organizations too that, you know, they could register with, a professional organization, so.
So will, will we identify those other organizations or are we just going to leave it AKC? Now, you know, that's question number one, and then question number two, are we going to hear that we're being a little, I'm not sure what the word I want is, elitist or something? That if you have the money to have a purebred dog, you can have a litter of six or eight or 10, but if you don't and you've got a mutt, and a lot of great dogs are mutts, but then you're not going to be, I mean, and again, I'm not arguing with you, I'm just wanting to make sure we aren't setting ourselves up here for more complications.
And this is probably one that we need to sit down and discuss.
And then on municipal pound, I assume that that city may establish, somewhere in there, do we mention about meeting all state or federal guidelines or, or whatever for that? Because as I remember, when we were kind of taking over this animal control, there were a number of questions about heat and cooling and, and all the stuff that I don't know anything about.
Well, in order to get licensed by the state, you have to meet their requirements. So it's, that's really a state regulations that you have to meet. So I don't, I don't know if we would need to list all those in ours.
All right. Okay, thank you.
You bet. Further questions? Sandy? Ron?
Sandy, I mean, this is a tremendous amount of information to absorb here. How are people who have these animals, dogs, cats, whatever, how are they going to know about all these ordinances? Are, are we going to get them a copy of this when they apply for their license or how are they going to know if they're in violation or?
Right, this, this is on the website right now.
Okay.
And I'm, Tim, I'm sure will put a good article in the paper.
Word for word.
And, and it's, I, I would say word of mouth, you know? If people license, we'll be more than happy to give them a copy of the ordinance, you know? So it's just, it's getting the word out there.
Carolyn? I'm sorry, Ron, just let me just finish, are you?
Yeah, I'm just curious how people are going to know if they're in violation.
Well, but it, it's kind of the same, Ron, with, with, I mean, we had an ordinance before. We've got all kinds of ordinances about all kinds of things, and those people that deal with them tend to know the rules. And particularly those that violate the rules tend to know what they are when they find out about them. But you're right.
Just, just reading through this, I can see numerous violations throughout the community.
Right. And our officers, our officers are really good, you know, if people honestly don't understand, they're going to explain it to them, they're not just going to issue them a citation.
I think, I think that's a very important part, as we do with code enforcement and everything else. The intent is not to see how many tickets we can write, it's to, it's to deal with the owners, the irresponsible owners, and to educate the responsible ones so that they know what to do. Carolyn?
Just to follow up on Mr. Welper's comment, I would guess that the vast majority of animal owners in the city will probably never be familiar with this. I mean, everybody knows you license your dog and get rabies shots, but I see this as an enforcement tool for the really, really bad owners who have been violating, who should have been, who should not own animals, okay? And if they are going to own them, they should pay for the animal's bad behavior. It's a personal accountability thing, and I know that is not a popular thing in our culture today, but owners need to be accountable for their dogs, and this gives us a way to make them so.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah?
One of the questions I had, I don't know, Ms. Greco, if you could answer this, but what if there's somebody who owns a dog that has a vicious attack upon, upon somebody and chooses to, they, they know that their dog attacked, they know their dog hurt somebody seriously, they take that dog and get that dog out of town. What happens then? I mean, I, I see that there's a part in here where there can be some orders related to enforcement, but what if that person keeps that dog, nobody knows where it's at, and then brings that dog back in at a later date?
We have had that-
And does the police ever get involved in investigations like this?
We have had that happen before, and in fact, we've basically chased people around town because we know that they're moving, and we usually end up finding out where they are and, and confiscating the dog.
That you'd be-
And a lot of times we had to have police with us.
You'd be amazed at how connected Maria is to the animal community in town and, and how she knows animals and where they are. It's, it's pretty amazing.
And who owns them.
And who, yeah, yeah. Okay, counsel and, and all, we're not going to vote on this today. This is our first shot across the bow with this, so I had anticipated to have more time for public input today. We're down to literally 10 minutes for public input. We will have another work session prior to asking the council to vote on this, if not more than that. I want to fully vet this and give you guys the opportunity to discuss things, so I, I'm not going to start the three-minute clock, I, I'm just going to admonish Randy that if, if you want to take all 10 minutes, that's fine, if you want to take less than that or whatever, but go ahead and, and give us some, start some rebuttal. We will have more conversation before it's over with. And, and also, before, before we, before we end, Randy, let, let-
I know there's other people who want to get up here.
Okay, let me, let me say also that as we did through this process, if you have thoughts and comments and you want to come the next time, that's fine. If you want to email them beforehand to Sandy or to me so that we have an opportunity to kind of look at them, like Mr. Harrod brought in three pages of comments today.
Six.
So it gives us an, I'm sorry?
More than that.
Oh, was there? Okay, there were several pages.
Of course.
So please feel free to do that so that we have an opportunity to look at them. Randy, go ahead.
By the way, those copies-
Give us your name and address.
...have copies of what I brought in, I would say put them aside because with the changes incurred, I'm not sure they're even applicable.
Give us your name and address for the record, please.
Randy Harrod, 111 Highland Boulevard.
Thank you.
I'll, I'll be very quick because I know there's other people that like to say things. The discussion that went on about guard dog is not correct, including the turkey, I'm sorry. But from a dog breeders and people who are involved with dog breeding and training for guard dogs and like that, guard dog is a generalized umbrella term that goes across a group of dogs that are trained for specific types of work.
a group of dogs that are trained for specific types of work. They are not to be confused with vicious dogs, although certain types of training can put them in the dangerous category. They do not all fall in that category at all. In the part of it that's been around since Tim was mayor, which is this thing about the dogs at large, if you got Fido, and Fido gets out, and they catch it, which they are good at doing, catch Fido, and they bring him back, you're gonna pay a fine for that. Gets out again, you're gonna pay another fine, larger. Gets out a third time, even today, without these changes, it is considered a vicious dog. And if Fido is a sweet little dog, and all he does is come and lick you, and wanna be around you, or any neighbor, it's still a vicious dog, and you still gotta get $300,000 liability, and that's wrong. Put that aside. The main thing I wanted to talk about, and I'll keep it as brief as possible, with this thing about going to an obedience school, there's no definition of what kind of obedience school. There's many different kinds of obedience schools, all meant for different kinds of things, with different kinds of dogs, with different kinds of trainers. Here, you're talking about a dog that's defined as dangerous, and that dog has to probably go through a period of untraining, as does the owner. And I'm telling you right now, there's probably not more than five trainers in this area, if that many, that can do that kind of thing. I don't know how you're gonna get them involved, because there's nothing in here that defines how the city relates to that obedience trainer. That obedience trainer has gotta get some kind of written document about why this happened, what the history of the dog is, what the city wants, and there's gotta be some kind of authority on it, and they'll have to be paid in advance, because probably, the owner's not gonna pay it, because this will not be cheap. You're talking $2,000 to $5,000 to do what you guys are talking about with that dog. And all I'm saying is, there's nothing in here about that at all. And for Buck, you know, we had talked, and I appreciate the opportunity to see the code, but we had talked about having a chance to sit down and talk about this stuff, and we're not really doing that. We have no, as the public, have no real input to this yet. Yeah, we can give you stuff, but it really doesn't mean anything. If you're talking about having a meeting that we can get together with and sit down and debate these issues, that's a different kind of thing. One last thing, in here, it mentions different places where it is a right of appeal to the city or to a court. Let me suggest, and I've mentioned this to others, that you, as a city council, do not wanna be the court of last appeal. If it's my dog that's got a citation, I wanna be treated just like if I got a citation for, for driving. You don't let those drivers come in here, because they were speeding and, and appeal to you, the dog person shouldn't either. There should be a court specifically assigned for this, that actually knows what it's talking about, and with all due respect, you guys, with the exception maybe of Carolyn, really don't. I wouldn't wanna be in your shoes and have a bunch of people mad at... I got a lot more I can talk about, but I'm gonna step aside and let other people come up there and do it.
Thanks, Randy.
Don't care my 526 Home Park Boulevard, Waterloo. You know, I, I can't see anything but good about what you're doing, and I totally agree with what you're doing, and I totally agree that it's going after the dog, the dog owner. The only thing that got involved, and me involved in this situation, is I own a pit bull. Number two, I've, I've owned two of them. My pit bull is one of the friendliest dogs you'd ever wanna meet. But there's something about my dog, and I'm listening to this ordinance, and what you're trying to tell me as an owner is I'd have to 100% guarantee you that my pit bull is not mean. Well, I also have a Shih Tzu, and they also sleep in the same bed, they also drink out of the same bowl, but I'll guarantee ya, my Shih Tzu, under the term of mean, is meaner than my pit bull, because if she don't like something, she's gonna nip at your foot. My concern is here is, I don't want my dog biting anybody, I don't want my dog abusing anybody in any way, shape, or form, but I can't guarantee that. It's a dog. I'm doing everything I can to make sure, and I've raised that dog, so that it's a good dog, it's a friendly dog, it's, it's all kinds of stuff, but my dog can't read. We got a whole bunch of Darrellex sitting over in this building over here that can read, and they're still over there. I'm, I just wanna make sure that you protect me, and at the same time, it's possible that my dog can get out, it's possible that my dog can bite somebody, I cannot guarantee that not happening. I just wanna be treated fair when that happens, because I'll, I guarantee ya, I'm gonna cooperate with everything you say, because I don't want that to happen. I don't. So, as you go through this thing, think about us that are good, responsible owners, I guess I'm patting myself on the back there, but so be it. I want my dogs to be good, I don't want you to have a problem with my dog, but I can't guarantee that. But just give me a fair shake if something does happen.
And Bill, I, I think that that's the, as Sandy was presenting, there's a great deal of discretion involved with all of this, and, you know, if you know Maria at all, and Sandy at all, you know that that's going to be exercised, that discretionary part of it.
But I'm just voicing what a lot of people are thinking out there.
Sure.
And I think that's the concern about this ordinance, is that, look, I'm gonna tell you, there's probably 80% of the dogs in Waterloo aren't even registered, they don't even get a dog tag, and, and Ms. Cole, and, and you guys have brought up a good issue here. How did, I didn't know about this dog ordinance, the depth of the dog ordinance, until all this come up. Seriously. And I've had a dog now for over 10 years, 15 years. I didn't, I didn't have a clue about this thing. You know why? Because I was never faced with it. I come down, bought my license, I bought my dog park license, went about my business. Until all this come up, I wasn't aware of it, so I understand what you're saying, but there's a lot of people out there.
Thanks, Bill.
Never seen this document. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike, please give us your name and address.
Mike Williams, 1203 West Second Street, Waterloo. First, I'd like to say thanks for listening to the input and using some of that input. I've seen some of the things that I, that I suggested in, in the ordinance. One of my big concerns, and Sandy kinda addressed it, was in the potential, potentially dangerous dog definition, there, and there's a definition of regulated dogs, and that includes the potentially dangerous dog. But as you read through the other, the other subsections, they're, they're divided out between vicious dog, dangerous dog, and, and the potentially dangerous dog. Where I have, and I have concerns about that definition, is my dog's a dominant dog. He's not a bully, he's a dominant dog, it's a Labrador mix. We're out walking one day, and we walked by a, a dog that was chained to a tree, no problems, we got about 20 feet, he turned around to glance back at that dog, saw that the dog was moving towards us, and took a defensive stand. By that posture, he's a potentially dangerous dog. The other, you know, so, I'd like to see, that, that's where I have a lot of concerns, is in, in that potentially dangerous dog area, because as you read through it, it does, it does get confusing. And the other thing is, with Apollo, my dog is being a dominant dog, if another dog, like, tries to put its neck over the back of Apollo's neck, which is a dominant position in the dog world, Apollo lets him know, that's not okay, so, in his, in his eyes. So, I, and I guess the question is, was the intent to loop the, in the regulated dogs, to have the potentially dangerous dog in the same grouping of, of the vicious and dangerous dog? Because then, there's, you know, the bard from the city, just because he's potentially dangerous. The at-large definition includes that they can use a rope or a cord as a leash around the dog's neck. I don't see that as acceptable as a dog owner. In the tethering law, in the new tethering proposal, it says that it has to be attached to a collar. I think that would be unacceptable, you know, if they're, if they're using anything around the dog's neck, it should be attached to a collar, and, and have a swivel. Definition of a caretaker, caretakers used a lot throughout the ordinance, there's a part of that that says the caretaker is defined as a person that has, having possession of an animal for a period of more than six hours. Why that six hours? What, what if something happens before that six hours? As you're, as you're reading through, you can see, I was surprised how much the word caretaker was used throughout the ordinance. So, that, and the noisy, the noisy and annoying animals, I couldn't hear Sandy's response to why, David's question of why the three people. I, I'm one that's fight, that...
Mike, the reason for that, it sounds like Chris is getting up, is, is we were having an incredible issue with neighbors just being vindictive. There really wasn't an issue with a barking dog, but a neighbor was, had a, had a, had a bone to pick with the next neighbor, so they were making complaints. And it was the court system that actually advised us, in order to make the legitimates be complaint, that it required more than one complainant.
Okay. Nowadays, videotape widely, widely used, in fact, one of the part for the dangerous dog, if it's at, if it's still in the city, you can use videotape as evidence. I would, I would like to have you look at that, because, you know, as a, as a former police officer, you know that, you know, to get people involved is pretty much impossible.
We've got two minutes.
Okay. I will, that's, I guess my main point about that, because I've been dealing with the barking dogs now, and, you know, neighbors don't wanna get involved, so...
You know, and I, I think, I, I think that the videotaping, or audio, whatever, might be an alternative, and, and we'll explore that, Mike.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, I, it's, you've got, we've got a meeting that's supposed to start in one minute. We will have many more conversations about this before it's over with, and please feel free to submit written comments, call, call myself, or call Sandy, it's better to call Sandy, because if you call me, then I just try to relate it to Sandy, but call us, or write us, and give us information. We'll let the dust settle on this, and we'll get comments and feedback, and we'll have another session that we will have more input from the public regarding this, and maybe we'll tweak a couple of things that we've heard today. And I'm sorry, the hour went quickly, as I thought it would.
Motion adjourned. Did you do that?
I think we have a motion to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. We're adjourned. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the regularly scheduled session of the Waterloo City Council on this January 21st. Madam Clerk, could you read the roll, please?
Yes, Ms. Cole.
Here.
Mr. Jones.
Here.
Mr. Schmidt.
Here.
Mr. Lind.
Here.
Mr. Morrissey.
Here.
Mr. Welper.
Here.
Mr. Hurt.
Here.
Thank you very much. If you would all join me in standing for just a moment of silent reflection of prayer, please. Our pledge tonight is gonna be led by Mr. Paul Hudding, our Leisure Services Director. Paul, please.
Please join me in our pledge. Our pledge to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, you may be seated. Mr. Mayor, we've got an amendment here we've got. We're gonna start tonight, do we do the proclamation first?
The agenda in a minute, yeah.
Okay, do the agenda in a minute.
I'd like to make a motion to approve an amended agenda, and that amendment is to add Catholic School Week's proclamation, and also to amend item 1B12, change mayor's appointment of the Complete Streets Advisory Committee by removing Sherman Wise and replacing that name with Will Frost. Also, with the approval of the amended agenda, I move that we approve the minutes of January 13, 2014's regular session.
Second. Counsel, do you have questions or comments regarding the agenda of the minutes? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. And now, we have a proclamation. Dale Monroe, Dale, if you would please come up. Just come through the door there, and...
Right.
Again, we came up in the elevator, but welcome again. Nice to see you. Just turn and face us here, we'll, we'll recognize and read this proclamation for you for Waterloo Catholic Schools Week. City of Waterloo, Iowa proclamation, whereas education is critically important to the health and economic vitality of Waterloo, and plays a significant role in a family's choice to where to live, and whereas every child in Waterloo has the right to the highest quality schools possible, and whereas citizens, or citizens across Waterloo agree that improving the quality of education, particularly for the neediest of children, and expanding access to highly effective schools, should be an issue of importance to our city leaders, and whereas the citizens, I'm having trouble with that, citizens of Waterloo recognize the critical role that an effective and accountable system of education plays in preparing all students to be successful, successful adults in a global economy, and whereas Waterloo is home to a multitude of high-quality public schools, private schools, and Catholic schools, and educational variety not only helps to diversify our economy, but also enhances the vibrancy of our community. And whereas Waterloo has many high-quality teaching professionals in public, non-public, and Catholic schools who are committed to educating children, and whereas through continued teamwork between parents, teachers, and schools, our community can strive to provide greater educational diversity and instructional excellence for our children. And whereas the vital cause of education reform is one that transcends ideology and political party affiliation, and whereas Catholic Schools Week is a nationally celebrated event, and during this week, we join with millions of parents, educators, schools, and organizations around the country to raise awareness of the importance of Catholic schools for our city, state, and country, that challenge and motivate all our students to succeed. Now, therefore, I, Buck Clark, Mayor of the City of Waterloo, Iowa, do hereby proclaim in Waterloo, Iowa, the week of January 26 through February 1, 2014, as Waterloo Catholic Schools Week. Dale, there is that. Let me get a microphone for you, maybe you'll say a couple of words about the event. There you are, sir.
Well, thank you very much, Mayor and City Council, appreciate this. The event is scheduled for lots of activities in the parishes, as well as our schools, there's a calendar of events out on our website, and we invite all of you to participate. We appreciate the opportunity to help serve the children of Waterloo.
Very good.
Thank you very much.
And Dale, thank you for what you and your colleagues do for all of our kids. Thank you. Thank you again. Have a great weekend.
I'd like to make a motion to receive, place on file, and approve the consent agenda, items 1A through B23. Also, with the approval of the consent agenda, I move that we make our bills payment, which will be read by our Finance Chair.
The bills this week are $804,118.48, 804,118.48.
Second. All in favor, please? I'm sorry, it's a roll call vote. Madam Clerk, please.
Ms. Cole.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
I would vote yes on everything, except I need to abstain on a payment of $123.50 to Schmidt Telecom Partners for work done on behalf of the city.
Mr. Lind.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mr. Welper.
Yes.
Mr. Hurt.
Yes.
Very good, the motion carries. Item number two, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Schmidt.
Item number two, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file, file proof of publication of notice of public hearing, and that is for the city limits urban revitalization area.
Second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. The motion carries, and the hearing is now open. Madam Clerk, did you have any written objections on file to this item?
There were none.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak either for or against item number two, renewing the CLURA in Waterloo? A second time?
Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion and to close the hearing and receive the recommendation of approval of the Planning, Programming, and Zoning Commission.
Second.
Counsel, do you have comments or questions at this point?
Sir.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. The motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to receive, file, consider, and pass for the first time, an ordinance amending ordinance number 5089 by... first time an ordinance amending ordinance number 5089 by extending the established city limits urban revitalization area through December 31, 2017.
Second.
Madam Clerk, it's a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Lind.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mr. Welper.
Yes.
Mr. Hurt.
Yes.
Ms. Cole.
Yes.
Very good. The motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Lind.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mr. Welper.
Yes.
Mr. Hurt.
Yes.
Ms. Cole.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Welper.
Yes.
Mr. Hurt.
Yes.
Ms. Cole.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Very good. The motion carries. Thank you. That's a good deal done. Item number three, please. Mr. Hurt.
I move to receive and file and instruct city clerk to open and read bid inadvertently missed and refer to J.B. Bolger, Golf and Downtown Area Maintenance Manager, for review for the purchase of a new 2014 Timber Wolf TW10 log splitter.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And just for explanation, for those that might have remembered, we opened a bid last week on this particular item. We did, and there was a small envelope in the bottom of the bid envelope that we missed, so there were two bids instead of just one that we opened last week. We're going to open the second bid tonight. Madam Clerk, please.
The bid was from Timber Wolf of Rutland, Vermont. And the total bid is for $53,995.53995.00.
Thanks, Madam Clerk. Paul, please.
Similar, I thought.
Excuse me, Mayor.
Yes, sir. I'm sorry.
I think it would be nice if Paul would give a brief explanation as to what that is. I had two different people ask me this week, why are we paying that much money for a log splitter?
Okay. Very good. Thanks, Forrest.
Paul Hudding, Leisure Services Director. It's basically a very large log splitter that will handle tree trunks, basically, that are too big to do anything else with. So, these tree trunks currently are being stockpiled at, kind of at the waste management site, and they're just collecting. So, this will allow us to split those, and then we can take those split pieces to the Falls Avenue site, and they'll be available for general use for, then they can be cut up by the public and used for firewood.
Thanks, Paul. You're welcome. Very good. Let's do four, five, and six, please, on the resolutions. Ms. Cole.
I move we adopt a resolution approving request from Fire Chief to increase fees associated with friendship fire protection in the amount of 5% effective July 1, 2014. I move we adopt a resolution adopting Waterloo Fire Rescue Ambulance Fee Schedule for fiscal year 2015. I move we adopt a resolution approving contract modification number two in the amount of $3,400 for work performed by KWS Inc. of Cedar Falls in conjunction with the fiber optic connection city network to Sportsplex Building, and authorize Mayor to execute said documents.
Ms. Cole, do seven, two, please.
I move we adopt a resolution approving completion of project and recommendation of acceptance of work performed by KWS Inc. of Cedar Falls at a total cost of $43,250 in conjunction with fiber optic connection city network to Sportsplex Building.
Second.
Very good. Counsel, do you have questions or comments regarding four, five, six, or seven? Madam Clerk, it's a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mr. Welper.
Yes.
Mr. Hurt.
Yes.
Ms. Cole.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Lind.
Yes.
Very good.
The motions carry. Eight, nine, ten, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Schmidt.
Item number eight, I'd like to adopt a resolution approving contract with Advanced Systems Inc. of Waterloo, Iowa, for the purchase of an electronic document management system and to license additional software, including an assurance and support agreement in the amount of $65,903, along with supporting hardware, not to exceed $92,000 for both software and hardware. Item number nine is adopting a resolution approving completion of project and recommendation of acceptance of work performed by Stickford Construction Company of Hudson, Iowa, and receive and file a two-year maintenance bond for the Sunnyside South Edition paving, sanitary sewer, and stormwater improvements, and receive and file a two-year maintenance bond. And item number 10 is adopting a resolution approving request of community planning and development staff to waive application of bidding policy and award the bid received from Veeth Construction Corp. of Cedar Falls, Iowa, in the amount of $34,040 in conjunction with the fiscal year 2014. 2672 and 2736 Logan Avenue Sanitary Sewer Services, and authorize the Mayor to execute said document.
Second.
Questions or comments, Counsel, regarding eight, nine, or 10? Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Welper.
Yes.
Mr. Hurt.
Yes.
Ms. Cole.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Lind.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Very good.
The motions carry. Let's do 11 and 12, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Cole.
I move we adopt a resolution approving request by GMJ2 Industries LLC, that would be Jim Ellis for the five-lot final plat of Williston Field Edition to allow for the construction of five new single-family homes generally bounded by Williston Avenue, Pleasant Street, West Seventh Street, and Allen Street. And 12 is a resolution approving a request by the same company, also known as Jim Ellis, for the four-lot final plat of Baltimore Field Edition to allow for the construction of four new single-family homes generally located north of Eureka Street and east of Vermont Street.
Second.
Very good. There's a motion in second. Counsel, do you have questions or concerns?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Lind.
Noel, are those tax-abated houses, do they get tax abatement for a while?
Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director. They would be eligible for the CURE or the CLURA, depending upon the location, just like any other house would be for those programs. Other than that, they're otherwise market rate houses.
Mr. Welper.
Mr. Mayor, last week, I think I requested that they possibly see some pictures of the houses that were going to be built, and they weren't in our packet. Did Jim not have any pictures of those houses?
I believe he does.
In color.
He's prepared.
This is Jim Ellis, 402 East Fourth Street, GMJ2 Industries. I do have pictures, elevations, and floor plans that I can have passed around there, showing each of the floor plans for the ranch style, split foyer, story and a half, and two-story homes. So, there are elevations and floor plans for each one. And then I also have a picture here of the signage that we're ready to put up on the sites for both the Baltimore Field First Edition and the Williston Field Edition for both those sites, for the complete nine homes.
Sign up there already, Jim.
There is a sign on the northern section of Baltimore Field, not on the southern section.
Okay.
But these are for the southern section, and then there is no sign currently up there right now for Williston Field.
Thank you.
Further, Mr. Welper?
No, that's fine.
Right now? Okay. Are there any further questions regarding 11 or 12? Madam Clerk, it's a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Hurt.
Yes.
Ms. Cole.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Lind.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mr. Welper.
Yes.
Very good. The motion carries. Item 13, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Hurt.
I move to adopt a resolution setting date of hearing as February 3, 2014, to approve a request by the City of Waterloo to rezone 12 acres of land from RF, R4 to RP Plan Residence District, and 110 acres of land from A1 Agricultural District to BP Business Park District, located at the southeast corner of Highway 20 and Amesboro Avenue, and instruct the city clerk to publish notice.
Second.
Counsel, do you have questions or comments? Madam Clerk, please.
Ms. Cole.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Lind.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mr. Welper.
Yes.
Very good. The motion carries. Ladies and gentlemen, that's the end of our regularly scheduled business tonight. Conversely, from last week, when we had a two-and-a-half-hour meeting, tonight's a relatively short meeting, so... Mr. Mayor. Would it be inappropriate for me? What's your name? Mr. Morrissey?
Yes, sir.
Patrick J. I had talked to Noel Anderson earlier, and being that CLURA has passed, I had asked him or suggested maybe, for the sake of some of us out here who don't know that much about CLURA versus CURA, if he could give just a brief synopsis for the public about what CLURA and CURA is and the advantages that it has for the taxpayers of Waterloo. Sure. Noel? Please.
Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director. Going back a number of years, over 10 years ago, the City of Waterloo actually had a group of U&amp;I students do a dilapidated housing study, just a drive-by windshield survey of the City of Waterloo. Looking at the details of that, where they thought that there were some deteriorating housing or some needs for some infill development, the City of Waterloo adopted the CURA District, which is a consolidated urban revitalization area. Prior to that, there was about seven separate smaller urban revitalization areas in small neighborhoods, so this consolidated all of them together, similar to what Des Moines did in the early 90s. The CURA actually, so located basically north of Williston, covering large portions of Ward 3 and Ward 4, up to about the Logan Plaza area, Donald Street area. The CURA gives three years at 100% tax abatement, or a 10-year graduated scale on tax abatement at 80%, 70%, 60%, 50%, 40-40, 30-30, 20-20 for the 10-year. That is eligible for any added taxable value of at least 10% on residential, 15% on commercial, but it's eligible for any residential, so that would be a new construction, improvements to an existing house, rehabilitation, additions to houses, any new commercial ventures, again, new constructions, additions, rehabilitations, or industrial, all within the CURA District. And again, that's a specific boundary located on incentive maps that we have in the City of Waterloo. About three years ago today, or three years ago, July 18, 2011, the City of Waterloo was looking at ways to try and bring more one- and two-family homes, especially to the Waterloo area. The City Council adopted the CLURA, which is the city limits urban revitalization area, so essentially, we took everything outside of the CURA out to the city limits and made that eligible for three years at 100% tax abatement on just one- and two-family homes. So, anyone building new construction of a single-family or a twin home would be eligible for the three years at 100% tax abatement. They'll still pay taxes on the land in all of these through the tax abatement, but the building value and all that will be eligible for the abatement. And we have some forms that they need to fill out with either program in the planning office. We also have some pictures of homes that have been built under the CLURA and the CURA, and then kind of give you approximate information of what you'll save in tax savings.
Thank you. Very good. Good question, Pat. It's also time for oral presentations. If there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak to the Mayor or Counsel on any items of business, please step to the microphone, give us your name and address, and as always, please limit your comments to three minutes. Mr. Mayor. Whoop. Okay. Yes, sir. You just about waited too long.
I know. I'm very slow. Forrest Dilvo, 1725 Huntington Road. In mentioning the CLURAs and the CURAs, at the Building Inspection Department, people who come there who don't know about these things don't know enough to ask or get a form. I had some people buy a house across the street from me, do extensive remodeling and redeveloping, new windows, new siding, new roof, were prepared to put in new garage, new concrete, and they had never been told. I went over and plowed the driveway one day, and I told the lady, have you applied? And she said, for what? So, I think maybe we need to do a better job of advertising that we do have it, and it is for remodels as well as new homes.
Yeah, that's a good point, and we should do that.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Hurt.
Motion to receive and file oral comments, and also, we possibly add his comments, Council memorizes, to the oral comments as well.
Sure.